Six bags.
I want to welcome you to tonight's the council meeting for the city of Columbia Heights for Monday, January 13th, 2020. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Biskin's here.
Councilmember Williams?
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Mershen?
Here.
Councilmember Nowitzki?
Here.
And Mayor Schmidt?
Here. And tonight's invocation is going to be provided by Rachel James, a First Lutheran. You must have a busy season now with all the kids.
Oh, yeah.
Excited to be back at school, right?
Oh, yeah. Good evening there, members of the council. In light of Martin Luther King Junior Day coming up, I elected to read one of his famous prayers for us tonight. "Oh God, we thank you for the fact that you have inspired men and women in all nations and in all cultures. We call you different names. Some call you Allah, some call you Elohim, some call you Jehovah, some call you Brahma, some call you the unmoved mover. But we know that these are all names for the one and same God. Grant that we will follow you and become committed to your way and your kingdom, that we will be able to establish in our lives and in this world a brotherhood and a sisterhood, and that we will be able to establish here a kingdom of understanding where men and women live together as brothers and sisters and respect the dignity and worth of every human being." Amen.
Thank you. If you are able, please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll read our mission statement. Our mission is to provide the highest quality public services. Services will be provided in a fair, respectful, and professional manner that effectively address changing citizen and community needs in a physically responsible manner. The next item is the approval of the agenda. If there are no additions or no corrections, do we need to add a correction, addition for this?
I can mention it when I go through the-
Okay. If there are no additions or no questions from the council, could you go ahead and read them, Kelly? Oh, excuse me. We need to approve the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And there are no items under number six, so the consent agenda, then.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item A is approval of the minutes of the city council. One is the work session of December 9th, 2019, and the joint city council and school board meeting of December 5th, 2019. Item B is acceptance of board and commission meeting minutes, and that's for the planning commission meeting of May 7th, 2019, the park and recreation commission minutes from July 24th, 2019, and the library board minutes from December 4th, 2019. Item C is adoption of resolution 2020-01. That's designating official depositories for the city. Item D is adoption of resolution 2020-02, accepting donations that were received by the city of Columbia Heights. Item E is adoption of resolution 2020-03. That's appointing deputy city clerks for the purpose of administering the 2020 elections. Item F is adoption of resolution 2020-04, designating election judges and salaries for the 2020 presidential primary election. Item G is adoption of resolution 2020-05, appointing city council liaison and staff assignments to city boards and commissions and external boards for 2020. Item H is appointment of the city council president for 2020, and that is Councilmember Nowitzki. Item I is appointment of the Columbia Heights Volunteer Firefighter Relief Association Board of Trustee, and that's Councilmember Mershen, and myself as the alternate. Item J is adoption of resolution 2020-06. That's accepting an amendment to the feasibility report for the Water Main Project 1903. Item K is approval of an off-site gambling application for the Columbia Heights Athletic Boosters. That's for charitable gambling activities at the Polar Plunge on January 25th. Item L is authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into a contract for police services with the city of Hilltop for 2020. Item M is authorizing Captain Johnston's attendance at the Northwest School of Police Staff and Command. Item N is authorizing the fire service and emergency medical services contract with the city of Hilltop, and that's for the term of 2020 through 2022. Item O is the Public Works blanket orders for 2020 purchases. Item P is adoption of resolution 2020-07. That's adopting changes in the minimum wage and changes to seasonal recreation, part-time temporary library, and seasonal Public Works and Public Works intern wage staff, and that's the item that you had on your tables this evening. It was the schedules with those outlined. They were also emailed to you over the weekend. Item Q is approval of the business license applications that were in your packet, and item R is review of the bills totaling $2,515,156.09. And just a note that that is for one full month because there was only one meeting in December.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items if there are no corrections and no comments?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Biskin's. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is public hearings, a first reading of ordinance 1658, and ordinance modifying the animal ordinance. And is that you, Chief?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. This is a change in the current ordinance. And just a little background, later, earlier in 2019, the police department, community development, and the finance department met to discuss our current animal ordinance and some of the practices for managing domestic animals in the city. And this meeting was prompted over a question regarding the number of allowed animals that gets raised from time to time. Currently, our practice is licensing domestic animals, but it also brought up the discussion about the amount of staff time it takes to manage that process. And the cost to license a pet currently is very low, and we, after discussion, it was, you know, an increase in the fees would probably be met with, quite frankly, even less compliance than already right now. And so, we decided to focus on bringing some recommendations that accomplish the objective, which is, one, we know who the animals belong to, and two, that they're vaccinated. And so, with that, we're recommending that the ordinance be changed to remove the city licensing requirements, but also requiring that vaccination is still required, and also that display of owner information is on the collar of the animals. And then also, we're recommending that there's a limit on the number of dogs to three dogs per household, three cats per household, as well as, excuse me, as well as a combined number of five per residence. And then we're also recommending to adopt the provisions laid out in the statute, Minnesota statute, as it relates to dangerous dogs and also potentially dangerous dogs as well.
Anybody from the council have any comments or questions regarding this? I know that has been a concern, you know. We've had a dangerous dog in our neighborhood at times in the past, and it was known to bite people and bit the postman. And it was, the concern was that, well, they had more than three dogs at that point. And the thought was that was the limit. But like you said, and I've, in talking to staff, it seemed like it was very unclear in our ordinance as to what the limit was. So this is actually making it very clear. I appreciate staff and Lenny working with us and going through this. This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody from the public that would like to comment regarding the pet ordinance, the animal ordinance, this is the time. Please come forward.
Hi. Ramona Anderson, 4132 Stenson, Columbia Heights. I appreciate what you're trying to do. One pet is too many for the person who's irresponsible. So I don't know if the number is appropriate here. It's micromanagement. I don't appreciate government micromanagement. I would like to consider house sizes in Columbia Heights from 800 feet to 2,000 feet, lot size. We have a triple lot. One-size-fits-all is not appropriate in this ordinance. I would like to see maybe a, in this intrusive ordinance, I would like to see maybe a grandfather clause, because what we have here is Sophie's Choice, which pet we get rid of. Or do you take all, you see an influx of pets to the pound because of this ordinance. So I'd like to see a grandfather clause, if anything, added to this. And if there is an irresponsible neighbor who does not take care, like Donna's neighbor, that will become to the attention of the police soon enough, or to another neighbor, who then would take, I would hope, take responsibility to call and say, this animal's being neglected, abused, left outside, and just not being taken care of. We look out after each other that way. But this is not a one-size-fits-all. It doesn't work. The other thing is that, oh, that's all I have to say. No, just I would like to see a grandfather clause on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, here, council. I applaud having this ordinance. I think it will be helpful for our city. I also think that we need to have signs posted in parks to let people know whether it's a leash on or leash off, because I've mentioned to many people, you have to use a leash, and they said, no, we don't. And so, I said, well, okay. But anyway, here it says potentially dangerous dogs, as in the Minnesota State statute, but that's not defined in here. So, public wouldn't know what you're debating when you say, what's a potentially dangerous dog. I think a dangerous dog is clearly listed if it's exhibiting, but I would encourage you before the next public reading, or maybe now if you have a copy of that state statute, to define for those of us to listening, what is a potentially dangerous dog? Is it breed-based, et cetera? That's my question for you.
Okay. Lenny, could you answer some of those?
So, of course, I left the definitions with the state statute on my desk, and I was going to bring that with, but, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, we're just adopting the language that's in the statute, and I couldn't recite the definition of a potentially dangerous dog out of the statute right now either. But that's where either the public can find it in the identified statute, or we can have that included in the next batch of material just as additional information.
I think Rachel's only just looking for that information. I don't think it necessarily has to be in the ordinance because, or, because-
No, I wouldn't. We haven't. I mean, we're referring to state statute.
Oh, okay.
I'm just talking about if somebody, you know, state statutes are easy enough to access online as well, so you can go to the state statute and plug in, go to the revisers of state statutes, plug in potentially dangerous dog, and it'll get you right to the definition.
And as to the regard to leash on, leash off, I don't know, Kevin, if you want to answer that one, in parks?
Mayor, members of the council, there are really two parts to this. All of our city parks are leash on. So, this has been before the Park and Rec Commission, and one of the things that they decided to do that they thought was in the best interest is sign proliferation and really trying to remove some of these signs, because it is a standard anyways in all of our parks. We don't have any off-leash parks in the city of Columbia Heights. They're all leash on. And I think if this was something that the council was interested in, we can certainly bring it up with our Park and Rec Commission again. But we had so many signs up for a variety of things that our ordinance anyways, that the commission really felt it was appropriate to remove some of these signs, just because there was so much information that oftentimes they were pretty much ignored anyways. So, if that's the pleasure of the council, we can certainly bring it back to the Park and Rec Commission.
Who's our liaison this year? I forget now.
Councilmember Mershen?
Mershen.
So, have you, you haven't been at the park meeting yet?
No, it's coming up this month, at the end of the month, so.
And who was our previous one, was that? Do you have a discussion?
Yeah, I mean, it was, do we want the signs or not? And do we want our parks littered with too many signs, or do we just assume that people know that they should have their dog on a leash? I think more and more residents are trying to probably not have them on a leash because there isn't a sign posted that they have to be, so.
Mayor, if I could just add one thing?
Sure.
The, one of the discussions that did come up this year from the Park and Rec Commission was to add additional doggy bag availability. So that is one of the things in the spring we'll get in the ground, is that more parks. They wanted to see that. And that does have some language on there, but at least making pickup bags available at, and we're going to try to get all of our parks done, but we have them probably at half of our parks. And I think that was really the direction of the Park and Rec Commission.
Okay. Any other comments or questions regarding this?
I wanted people to know that we discussed the grandfathering issue about the pet, the number of pets during our work session. I was wondering if Lenny could answer, tell us, you can, same reason.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this was brought up before, and generally if we get a call like that, it's complaint based, we don't actively go out looking for numbers of animals per household. And I think we have to look at that on a case-by-case basis and look at conditions and age of the dogs and how long they've been with the family and that type of thing. You know, we're certainly not going to be separating animals out of households or anything like that, but I think it's going to be a case-by-case basis that we'll look at the, we'll look at that as those complaints, if they come up.
Okay. Thank you. You have another person I would like to speak for?
Mayor and council, Katie Jacobs, 4104 Monroe. Just a quick comment that perhaps, is there any kind of a packet that the PD gives out to dog owners? You're not going to do licensing anymore, so I don't know when that opportunity would arise, but I thought maybe the leash issue could be addressed in some kind of an informational packet, if that were possible.
Actually, this police department actually doesn't do the licensing right now anyway, so.
Or city, wherever that comes from.
Mayor and council, we don't have a handout that goes with the licensing. We do a new resident packet, though, and we, I don't know if there's anything in there right now, but we could certainly include something in there about-
Maybe even a blurb, an update in the newsletter would be helpful to remind people.
Especially when it gets a little nicer out and-
Yep. Thank you.
All right. That would be good to pass on to Ben and for the newsletter in the spring. Any other comments from the public? Then I need, motion to close the public hearing, waive the reading?
Move to close the public hearing, waive the reading of ordinance 1658. There'll be an ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then I need a second motion.
Move to set the second reading of ordinance number 1658, being an ordinance amending chapter eight, Article 1 of the Columbia Heights City Code relating to animals and elimination of dog and cat licenses for January 27th, 2020, at approximately 7:00 PM in the city council chambers.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin's and second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just to verify, if this does pass in January of 27th, 27th and 2020, when does it go into effect, then? Is it 30 days?
As with any of your ordinances or amendments, it's 30 days thereafter.
I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. And then moving on to the next item, resolution 2019-102, a resolution approving revocation of the conditional use permit for property identification number 36-30-24-33-0151.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Aaron Sharbic, Community Development Director. The item that we're here to discuss was actually tabled by the council on December 9th, 2019, where the council held a public hearing to consider the revocation of a conditional use permit for an off-site parking lot that's located just north of Jeff, Bobby, and Steve's Auto World Convenience Store and Gas Station. The subject site is owned by Jeff, Bobby, and Steve's Auto World, and a CUP was granted in 2006 to allow for that parking lot to serve as overflow parking for employees of the gas station. So, the property doesn't have an address that we can reference, and that's why we just had the PUD that you mentioned previously. So, the revocation hearing was held due to non-compliance by the property owner with several conditions that were listed in the CUP. The primary compliance issue related to storage of inoperable or junk vehicles in connection with a towing business. During the hearing that was held on December 9th, staff informed the council that the property owner had made advancements in working towards compliance, and it was noted that the junk vehicles were removed at the time of the hearing. A recommendation was made at that time to cancel the revocation due to that progress that was shown. However, during further discussion at the hearing, there were more questions and concerns related to other conditions other than those related to the junk vehicles that were raised by the council. And the decision was made to table it until this evening so that staff could complete additional research and provide clarity on some of the more specific concerns that the council had. And I'd just like to go through those briefly if I could. So, one of the concerns related to parking lot lighting and a condition that it should be shaded or diffused to direct light from adjoining properties. If the council recalls, there was a gentleman that spoke at the public hearing regarding that specific condition as a concern, being an adjacent property owner. Since that hearing, staff did complete a follow-up inspection and confirmed that all of that lighting has been removed, so there's no longer a compliance issue with any of the lighting on site because it's gone now. Another condition that was discussed at that hearing was that the driveway shall not exceed 6% grade, and it should be graded according to a drainage plan approved by Public Works. Following the hearing, staff from Public Works at the direction of the city engineer did complete a survey of the property and determined that the driveway grades and drainage design are compliant with the conditions of the CUP. And then, third, parking details should be submitted to the planning department indicating the maximum number of parking stalls that are available on the site. Further review of the original planning case files for the CUP in 2006 did reveal that that parking plan was submitted at that time in 2006, and it was included in the packet that you received for this evening. And then finally, the condition that the parking lot needs to be striped with appropriately dimensioned parking stalls and drive aisles was a condition. Upon inspection following the hearing, it was found that that condition has not been met and that the parking lot is not striped at this time. So that's the only remaining compliance issue related to the original conditions of the conditional use permit. So with that, staff does feel that the owner has made significant progress towards cleaning up all of these issues, and think that it could be brought into full compliance if we gave the owner some more time. And therefore, staff is recommending that the council continue to table this resolution to revoke the CUP until June 8th of 2020, and that would give the owner time that is weather permitting to complete the striping of the parking lot. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Okay. You're not allowed to speak on this?
No.
No, you are the owner of the property?
I wanted to comment something.
You cannot make a comment.
You can't comment.
Nope. Connie, did you have any comments?
Uh-uh.
Anybody else?
No.
I, you know, looking outside, snow on the ground, I believe that's fair, very fair, and you've been very generous. I think this should be okay. If nobody has any comments, then-
I do, but I can't comment.
No, you cannot comment. This is a public hearing, so I need to open this up to the public. So if there's anybody from the public that would like to make comments regarding this resolution, please come forward. If not-
Can I ask another question?
No, you cannot. I'm sorry.
Not in this issue.
Not, not in this issue. This is-
Not in this issue.
Not, not right now. We are discussing this item. Sorry. All right. If there's nobody from the public that wishes to speak, then I need a motion to table the resolution?
Move to continue table resolution 2019-102 to June 8th, 2020.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I vote?
No.
Madam Mayor?
Sorry.
Let's take a roll call vote, just to evidence the abstention by-
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Biskin's?
Aye.
Mayor Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mershen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nowitzki?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Passes. Thank you, and we'll see you again in June 8th. Next item for consideration, we have some bid considerations under item B. Adopt resolution 2020-08, being a resolution accepting bids and awarding a contract for 2020 concrete alley construction, city project 1906.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We do have two bid considerations for you tonight. The first is our concrete alley program. Just as a reminder, this was a continuation from bids that were received and rejected in 2019, just due to high costs. So, we rebid this project. Really little changed on the three alleys in question. These alleys are, and really what I'll do is give the between, because there's really no street addresses on these. These are Washington to Jefferson from 41st to 42nd, Madison to Monroe, 40th to 41st, Madison to Monroe, 42nd to 43rd. So we did receive eight bids on these, so we did have a high level of interest, and the low bid came in from Northland Excavating of Buffalo. One of the things we had to do, we've not worked with Northland Excavating before, so we did go through and did reference checks on them with both county and city clients that they had previously had, and those did come back positive for Northland Excavating. One of the more recent cities that they worked in is actually up in Fridley. So those did come back positive, and with that, we are recommending award with alternate one. Alternate one is where they would do private work for either sidewalk or driveway. We bid that in all of our primary street reconstruction projects with that. The low bid is in the amount of $548,705, and that is consistent with our engineer's estimate of $540,000. So it's not necessarily lower, but it's, it's not, it's less than 1% over. Mayor?
Anybody from the council have any comments or questions regarding this item?
No, I'm very excited, though, about having the alleys worked on, because we have, what, 30 at least, plus probably a few more, since that number came out a couple of years ago that are dire need. So I'm real excited that we actually were able to have a bid that came in. I know it's expensive, but it's well worth it to get those cleaned up, so thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kevin, this is assessing the homeowners, isn't it?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, 1999, we established an assessing policy for concrete alleys, and there is a cost share. So yes, this is assessing. We did hold the improvement hearing in 2019. The policy is that 45% of the cost is assessed of the construction, and then the city picks up 55% plus engineering.
Is that when you did last, at the same proposal, the last time we did it?
Yes. So all of our alleys, starting in 1999, that is the assessing policy that we followed.
Okay, thank you.
So my one question is, they're doing contract bids for private, just in those alleyways?
Correct.
Not for other residents who live around?
Mayor, members of the council, so we do miscellaneous concrete. So if there are residents that want to do, for example, sidewalk work or driveway work, they can contact Public Works, and we can provide pricing for them on that end. We always do recommend that they go out and get their own pricing, but we certainly have that available through Public Works. Those bids should come in either in March or April.
All right. Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other comments from council members? Then I need a motion to waive the reading, please.
Move to waive the reading of resolution 2020-08. There'll be an ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then a move to adopt?
Move to adopt resolution 2020-08, being a resolution accepting bids and awarding the 2020 concrete alley construction, city project 1906, to Northland Excavating LLC of Buffalo, Minnesota, based upon the low qualified responsible bid in the amount of $548,660.40, with $440,460.40 from Fund 415-51906, and $108,200 from Fund 653-49699, and furthermore, to authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into a contract for the same.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskin, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Then moving on to item B, adopt resolution 2020-09, being a resolution accepting bids and awarding a contract for 37th Avenue Trail and pedestrian ramp improvements, city project 1907, and Madison Street curb and gutter construction, city project 1902. And that 37th Avenue has been really exciting to look forward to.
Mayor, members of the-
Rode down that street recently, that avenue, and I'm just glad it's coming.
We are, too. So, Mayor, members of the council, this is really two projects. So one is a trail on the north side or Columbia Heights side of 37th Avenue from Central over to 5th Street, and that includes pedestrian ramps at all of the street crossings for that. and that includes pedestrian ramps at all of the, uh, street crossings for that. And that, uh, the second project here is Madison Street, uh, and that is, uh, right off of Thirty-seventh Avenue for about, uh, four hundred feet north where new curb and gutter would be placed and new bituminous surfacing would be placed. So, plans and specs were advertised through our normal, uh, means, through Quest and through the city's website, and also on our local newspaper, we had twenty-four contractors pull plans on this, and the city received six bids. Um, the low bid came in from Sun Ram Construction, and the next low bidder, um, it was really a very close, uh, well-spaced bid. Um, this came in at six hundred and thirty-three thousand from the, uh, next low bid. Well, the six bids, the high came in from Peterson at one million ninety thousand, so they were, they were pretty far out. But the, really the low three had a very low spread on those three bids. The low bid is six percent over the engineer's estimate for this project. And, uh, on that, because the bids were very close and I think the numbers are reasonable, um, we're recommending that that six percent over would be paid for with city funds out of our state aid account and our infrastructure fund account. And that, uh, those would not be passed on as assessments. So with that, Mayor, members of the council, we are recommending, uh, approval of bids for both projects, and that's for Thirty-seventh Avenue and then also for Madison Street. Mayor?
Any comments or questions from the council? Go ahead.
Kevin, is that gonna be assessed to, to the homeowners?
Yes. It will be, and again.
The north side of Thirty-seventh Avenue then?
Correct.
So homeowners and businesses.
So all properties would, any property on the north side would receive an assessment from, in this entire segment.
All right. No further questions? Can I get a motion to waive the reading, please?
Move to waive the reading of resolution twenty twenty dash zero nine, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biscayne, second by Councilmember Williams, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And then a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt resolution twenty twenty zero nine, being a resolution accepting bids and awarding the Thirty-seventh Annual Bituminus, Bituminus Trail and Pedestrian Ramp Improvement, city project nineteen oh seven, and Madison Street Curb and Gutter Construction, city project nineteen oh two, to Sun Ram Construction of Corcoran, Minnesota, based upon their low qualified responsible bid in the amount of six hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, with three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eighteen dollars from fund four one five dash five one nine zero seven, fifty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars from fund four one five dash five one nine zero two, a hundred and fifteen thousand from fund two one two dash four three one nine zero, seventy-five thousand from fund four one two, four five two, zero zero, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars from fund six zero one dash four nine four, three zero, nine thousand, four hundred and eighty from fund six oh two, four nine four, five zero, and furthermore, to authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into a contract for the same.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biscayne, second by Councilmember Nowitzki, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next item is, uh, designation of legal newspaper for two thousand and twenty. Oh, Nicole, that's yours, I think.
Um, so this was discussed at the workshop that we held last week. Um, I received some feedback to get circulation numbers, um, for each of the papers as well as prices. Um, I sent them a sample notice that we had published recently, um, and those were all included in your packet. As I outlined in the staff or the council letter, um, I'm recommending to go with Life, um, for the price, um, the consistency and location of the notices. We've been using that paper, um, for some time. The, we have a little bit more flexibility with the publication submission deadline, it's closer to the date of, um, and then it is free for residents to subscribe to the newspaper.
Okay. Thank you, any comments or questions from the council? All right, then can I get a motion to designate the Life as a city official paper?
Move to designate Life as the City of Columbia Heights Official Legal Newspaper for two thousand and twenty.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nowitzki, second by Councilmember Biscayne, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, thank you. Uh, next item is city manager's performance evaluation summary. Uh, we did a summer, we did a evaluation for, annual evaluation for our city manager. Everybody agreed she's done good, very good, excellent job, and appreciate your hard work. We did, uh, do I need to say something about, uh, wage in this one? Okay. The wage is based on the contract that we had stipulated at, uh, last year when we, uh, hired you. You approved it. And appreciate that, thank you very much. And next item is the city council, report of the city council. So, um, Nick, do you wanna start?
Uh, sure. Welcome back for the new year. I guess I've been spending a lot of time with family over the holidays and a few Lions events, so that's about it to report. But Kelly, thank you for doing a great job too. I just wanted to say that we, I appreciate it, I'm sure like we all do.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Councilwoman Mershen?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Williams?
Well, I'd like to publicly thank, uh, our Red Path, the guy that do, or does our annual audit. They've been doing it for years now, and we always have an excellent score. And I think it's, we should really be thankful for that situation. I'd also actually thank, uh, Barna Guzzi, I think that's a firm that we hire, and Jim Hafte is our county attorney or city attorney for, no, for, I mean, Columbia Heights. They've done a great job to keep our saving city straight or safe. And I also wanna thank that firm for what they've done in the years they've been with, with us. And thank you for that time.
Councilmember Biscayne?
I thought it was gonna be a quiet break between Christmas and New Year's, but it ended up like fairly busy. Um, I attended the, um, awesome white Christmas movie at our great Heights Neck Theater, it was well-attended. And what's interesting, what I found out is that when they first started this, they did two shows and they filled up. Now they're doing fourteen shows and they all sell out. And the music that they provide before the movie is beautiful, and it was just really cool. It was a great event. Um, I attended the employee recognition dinner, um, Officer Dale's retirement party, and I'm sorry, I couldn't, I didn't get a chance to find his last name, but Officer Dale, it was really sad to see him go after, I think, what, twenty-two? Twenty-three years' service with the city. The Christmas train, when I was there at first, um, I wasn't sure it was gonna be having that great of an attendance because it was cold, but as soon as the train shows up, everyone just shows up. I don't know where they're all hiding, but it was a great crowd again. Um, the other I attended, um, and helped out with the pet bed workshop. We had thirty volunteers who made eighty-five plus beds that day. A lot of them just stayed, it was a great turnout. We even had a friend, a woman that lived here, had a friend, I believe, um, from Red Wing. Um, so we're starting to see people from all different cities, not just Columbia Heights, so that was a great, um, event. And we donated the majority to MARS, the Minnesota Animal Rescue Society, and, uh, SECA. We gave some to SECA too. Um, also attended the holiday raffle fundraiser put on by the Lions. Um, I also attended Mrs. Klein's funeral. She was the oldest member who lived in Minnesota, and she lived to a hundred and twelve. And she grew up here in Columbia Heights, so I decided to come and at least I knew her, I've met her niece several times, and, uh, quite a woman. She was a seamstress, and she, um, sewed her, the suit that she, she was, um, buried in. Two years before she passed, at two, at a hundred and ten, she was still sewing. And, um, I'm quite proud to have someone like that, that was from our community. Um, I also attended the library board meeting this year, they are starting to review and update all library policies. And I also attended, uh, last night, the Lion's murder mystery, very first murder mystery, was greatly attended, and we had a lot of fun. It was quite interesting. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, it's been a busy holiday, it's with, with family, so a lot of family things going on this year. And, uh, I, I appreciate you attending that funeral, I wasn't intel to attend her funeral, and, uh, I've, I've heard so many stories about her, yeah, from her, from her niece, and I just appreciate all the things, the stories that she has, and hopefully some of those can be transferred over and to, uh, Ben and that information can get into our anniversary book because what, what an inspiration to our city, and she's lived here for many, many years. We, I don't, yeah, I don't remember his first name, but the owner of Sage's Auto Repair also passed away.
Terry.
So, do you remember his name?
Terry, I think, or something.
Yeah. I was, yeah, I, I, right now I can't remember his name, so we've, we've had some, several people in the community that have passed. I know, uh, Dick Pell, he was also just passed away too. He was a state rep, you know, in the New Brighton area. I remember his boss, he used to drive through on our parade every year. It was, uh, until it just got to be, uh, not safe. But, uh, it, it was fun to see and, uh, left a great auto collection. He's got a personal auto museum in St. Paul that I had the privilege of walking through, and at one time, my husband had connections and got to see it, but, uh, hopefully that's, that'll be taken care of too. Kelly, you wanna go ahead next?
Sure, just a couple of things, um, I forgot that, it's been so long since we've met. Our Employee of the Year was announced in December. Fire Captain Tony Kazupi is our Employee of the Year, very well-deserved, so a big thank you and congratulations to Tony. And along that same lines, our fire department is having a recruitment open house this Wednesday, the fifteenth, uh, from six to eight PM. If you're at all interested in the fire department and potentially being a member of the fire department, please come on down. It's at the department, um, on forty-first, and hopefully we'll see you there, again, the fifteenth, from six to eight PM.
All right. And, uh, Jim, are.
Holiday break was wonderful. It's always nice to have that. I will say our, uh, our son was home from college over Christmas, and he still likes his parents, so it doesn't get any better than that. I don't have anything else.
What college did you get?
Northeastern and.
You're still paying his bill in.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Next item is, uh, community forum. At this time, individuals may address the city council about any item not included on the regular agenda. Speakers are requested to come to the podium, sign their name and address on the form for the council secretary's record, and limit their comments to five minutes. Individuals are asked to state their name for the record. The city council will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if needed, request staff to follow up or direct the matter to be added to an upcoming agenda. Generally, the city council will not take official action on items raised at the community forum at the meeting in which they are raised. Uh, Nicole, do we have some members that wish to speak?
Do you have any names as of right now? Um, but if anyone wants to come speak.
This is your chance, you can come up and... Anybody? All right. Then, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn then, please?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mershen, second by Councilmember Nowitzki, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you.